Good evening, welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm gonna ask, is there any agenda changes?
Mr. Mayor, not from staff to present this evening?
Okay. Next, I'll open up for public forum. If there's anybody here wishing to address the council, please come to the podium, give us your name and address, and let us know why you're here.
My name is Colin O'Neill, 1215 Redbud. I'm here to ask for, again, for an apology from Mayor Travis for the comments he's made to the residents of this town and for blocking me on his Facebook pages. I'm still waiting for that apology.
You're gonna be waiting a long time, Colin, because it's not gonna happen.
Okay. Following that, I am making a formal request from the members of the city council to propose, and then second, a censure resolution against Travis for his unprofessional conduct as mayor. It is entirely unprofessional to call the citizens that you serve an unhinged mob to tell them to kiss my grits. This is not an acceptable behavior from the mayor that was elected.
And you know what, Colin?
Therefore, I'm asking that the city council sanction you for your behavior. Thank you.
Counsel, would you like to address that in any manner?
Well, never having gone down this road before, I think it would be incumbent upon us to visit with counsel regarding this before we get ourselves into a deep hole and do something that we're not familiar with. So, I think to make a motion tonight would probably not be a good thing until I myself and the rest of the council members have an understanding of what this could bring about. So, I think we just need more than we need to have an understanding about your request.
Thank you.
I think that's fair.
Would anybody else like to speak to the council this evening?
Well, I'm Peggy Perkins, 907 West Sixth. I just want to let it be known that I am against the battery storage. I feel like the residents that you serve, we should have had the right to vote on this for our own safety, our children's safety, our grandchildren's safety, and for the fact that if something happens, this town won't even be here. And the city isn't really getting a whole lot out of that versus the complications that could could cause.
Well, the only way I'll respond to that, ma'am, is we don't have all the information yet. I've contended all along that it's gonna take a while to get through this process. At last check, we have eight boxes to get through before this could ever get approved. We're in box two. So, we're still very early in this process. Projects like this do take a significant amount of time to come to fruition. We're still a long ways from that. I know there's some members of your group demanding answers to questions. Well, we're not gonna get those answers until engineering studies and everything else have been done regarding this project. So, the questions you're seeking answers to, we're simply not far enough along in the process to provide those.
Fair enough. I have just not had the chance to put my two cents in on that.
All right.
And thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Peggy, thank you for coming in and letting your voice be heard. I mean, I think that as residents, you all are entitled to definitely, you know, make your voices heard, let us know your concerns. I think safety is of the utmost important of my concerns as well. So, I hear you. I mean, I grew up here, my parents live here, I have children here, I work here. So, this isn't something that as a council person, I'm taking lightly. But I do feel like at the last meeting, we spoke about needing to make sure that we're educated on both sides of the fence. And so, right now, that's my stance, is seeking education and understanding on both sides of the issue. And safety is definitely one of the top concerns for me. So, I appreciate you letting us know that.
Shelley Hatton, resident. Do you want my address?
Sure.
417 San Fe. So, I just wanna know, how long do you think, you know, you said there's some questions that need to be answered. When do you foresee some of these questions coming to the table? If we're still in section two, when do you see moving on to section three? Like, how many months or years or?
I can't put a direct timetable on it because it really depends on how things move along in the process. The way I see this, and Ethan can correct me if I'm wrong, but the planning and zoning committee is gonna finish up on their regulations hopefully soon. They'll submit those to the council here for review, at which time either the council will accept them or will redline them and turn them back to them for changes. So, it's gotta get through that process. Once that process is done, then the developer could start the special use permit application process. And it's when that special use permit application process starts that would kick off the necessary engineering studies, one of them being a site-specific hazard mitigation analysis of the actual site we're looking at. And the second one would be an environmental impact study. Both of those would have to be done before a decision were to ever be made on the project. And then the final step would be negotiating that financial contract with the developer. And all those stars would have to perfectly align for anybody to make an agreement to move forward on this.
How many steps is that?
Well, there's eight total when we look at the way that it's laid out. And we're currently in box two with P and Z developing regulations. And I would like to point out, recently, there was a best project that was approved in Lebect County, just outside of the city of Parsons. And interestingly enough, that county went ahead and approved that project, and they didn't have regulations in place. And now they're working on backfilling with regulations. At least I feel like while we're going through this process, we're doing it in the proper order and the right manner. So, is there anybody else that would like to address the council this evening?
May I step back up?
Sure.
Peggy Perkins, again. Is that a public, I mean, can we get a copy of those eight steps?
I think we've put it out before, haven't we?
You have? Okay.
It's on our website? Yeah, so it's on the city's website.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the group? Comments from the group? If not, I'll close the public forum and move on and ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, after reviewing the consent agenda as submitted, looking at all those bills and all, I would make a motion to approve them as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda stands as approved.
And really quick, Shelley, I wanted to thank you for your question. I thought that was a really great question to come up and present. I think that is something that probably would ease a lot of people's frustrations. So, thank you for that because I always think that the more we can communicate those types of things, that kind of the better off we are. So, great question. Thank you.
Okay, there is no public hearing tonight, so we'll move on to unfinished business. And one item under that is a distressed property at 217 Main. Do we have an update on that, Ethan?
Just that we are, today was the date for the property owner to either submit to you all their plans for the property or to tear it down. Obviously, neither of those have happened. I don't know if City Attorney Jantsz has received any further communication from the property owner at this point.
Either the property owner or his representative, the primary way that I have to reach them is text messaging and then a phone number. No answer on that. I do, as I understand it from Julie, we did get the notices back again that we'd attempted to send to the property owner. I don't know, the last address I have is in Abilene.
Yeah.
Getting no response at all.
So, what's our next step?
We move forward with the nuisance process.
That's whether you want us to, yeah, run it through the nuisance process via municipal court or actually go out and start soliciting bids for demolition.
Well, what's your rathers right now? Or Brad, what's your suggestion? What's the direction you think we should head with this?
I mean, I think it's at the point where it's a policy decision by the council. We've gone ahead and noticed it all up. You've gone through the hearing process for the distressed structure. It's expenditure of taxpayer funds, so that part of it you have to keep in mind. But we can't allow the building to continue to deteriorate and just be there, or it'll be that way in 10 years from now, so.
At this point, are we acquiring it though? Like, no.
Yeah.
There's no acquisition potential.
Maybe just like what happened over here, where you tear it down, but then the people still own it and we're all still.
Real estate, and that's all you can do.
If we choose to pull this to municipal court, will that gentleman that owns the building now, at that point, be subpoenaed to show up?
It's not really, it's not a subpoena with the actual property owner. It's a, they're served. And it's a summons, in essence, to appear. It's just semantics. But you put them in a position to have to appear to defend. If they don't, obviously, it goes forward either way. And the court can rule as to what needs to be done, and levy fines, the whole element of that as well. The only reason for the nuisance process is it's a little quicker.
There's no penalty of contempt if he doesn't show up for that court.
Well, yeah, you can go ahead and even if they fail to appear entirely, and a lot of these instances issue a bench warrant. But on properties like that, we don't necessarily always do that.
Are you saying nuisance? Like?
Properties and nuisance property within the city based upon the definition that you've promulgated and put in your code. It's not up to code. It's got some safety hazards, health, safety, welfare, the three things that you control as a governing body or regulate, I should say. You've got a building there that's got significant damage and potential for further collapse and deterioration. Jason property owners are at risk. So, it's a question of what we want to do with it.
I'd like to get the proceedings going to get him into court. Obviously, we don't want to spend any more money on it at this point. We've already had engineering studies done. We know what's wrong with the building structurally. And I don't think we're in a position where we want to pay for that to repair that.
You wouldn't want to go ahead and get some RFQs for demo?
For demolition.
So, we know what that cost is.
I think we ought to look at getting him into court also and see if maybe we can't get this handled and maybe get it marketed, you know, if we can acquire it and then get it into the land bank and maybe if somebody in the community or is interested in acquiring it and breathing some life back into it, making the necessary repairs and such. But something needs to happen. We need to get it moving.
Ethan, were those just certified mail returns or was it also by regular mail?
Certified returns.
We could also send the regular mail and see if it comes back.
Okay.
Address the unknown.
So, it sounds like the consensus of the body is to go ahead and start the court proceedings to see if we can get him there. And at the same time, get a couple of quotes to let us know what the demo of that would cost.
How can you just disappear? Like, how can you not find where people are? Like, does he have an ex-wife that's really mad at him or like? I mean, I don't know. I'm just saying, like, he can't be.
Yeah, but.
I mean, how can it be so hard to?
Well, like in this case, certified mail, that we sense we have proof of delivery. You know how that works. You get the little green card in the mail and you decide, I don't care.
I don't decide that.
I'm saying hypothetically.
Yeah, no, I hear you. I just.
Do that, and after the requisite period of time, comes back as not picked up.
Just as you said, we've been so close to having this bill and getting it squared away, and the guy just disappears. We can't move forward with it.
At what point, like legality, do you not have like a warrant out or some kind of?
We were just discussing the reason I suggested.
That part, I guess.
Well, to this point, he hasn't actually broken any law, so.
Well, either way, we're gonna end up in a court process, either in municipal court or in district court because if you get bids and would move to tear down and they're still not responding, then we're gonna have to go and make sure we have an administrative warrant to actually take action and.
Yeah, get on the premises.
Get on the premises to actually do anything on the premises.
Ethan, is there? I know he could sign it over to the land bank. Have we ever in the past used land bank money to purchase something?
No, everything's been donated to the land bank thus far. I mean, we can. It's set up to be able.
Going through that right now.
It's set up to purchase. And the aspect of this, or like with 204 Main, I mean, when we were taking on probably six-digit realities of demolition, the city's preference was not to reward a property owner by giving them cash in order to just cost us more cash, if that makes sense, so.
Well, I understand that, but.
I mean, it's up to you all. That's a policy decision. But yes, the land bank, our land bank is set up.
Maybe you'll take a dollar.
So, and I believe we were giving them some sort of consideration with the original negotiations where they could claim value. It just wasn't an actual cash transfer.
Do we need a motion for any of this? Okay.
Didn't they sell all the contents out of that building?
Gone. They're gone.
Most of them.
The thing, that was the biggest issue from the outset, and the reason more time was allowed so that his agent could go ahead and market those items or get them out of there. From the outset, that was always something he had asked about. You know, his pool tables and signage.
Stuff out of there, correct?
As far as I know.
All right, counsel, we all satisfied with the direction that's going?
Yeah.
Probably not, but it's what we have to do.
I would just recommend a motion to continue this until. I would say, May 12th.
May 12th?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to continue this distressed property hearing at 217 Main until May 12th.
I have a motion and a second to continue this distressed property hearing to May 12th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, it is continued. Let's move on to new business now. And the first thing under new business is a Halsted Historical Society funding request. Somebody's here. Tessa's here.
Tessa, speaking with Halsted Historical Society. We want to thank you all for your past support of the Halsted Historical Society. We operate on exclusively on donations. Our annual expenses, just for insurance, utilities, and lawn maintenance and those types of things, are around $12,000. So, your support goes a long way to helping us with that. We don't quite get that much in donations every year. We will be opening in May soon, hopefully. And we have a new acquisition this year of a buggy similar to what Dr. Hertzler would have driven. So, we encourage everyone to come in and see it. Otherwise, you have any questions for me?
Counsel?
It's always good to be able to help support some of these organizations here. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the annual donation of the Historical Society for a amount not to exceed $5,000.
We have a motion and a second for the $5,000 annual donation to the Halsted Historical Society. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, that carries.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you, Tessa.
Thanks, Tessa.
Next up, we have a request from the Senior Center for their annual funding request.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Travis and city council members. I appreciate this time to speak with you regarding the generous $5,000 set aside for the Senior Center. In the last year, since I stood before you, we've been busy as ever at the Senior Center. Our 2024 pepper nut season was another one for the books. We baked 1,037 pounds, which took 450 pounds of flour, 848 pounds of sugar, brown sugar, 67 dozen eggs, and 106 pounds of butter. I think we may alone be the reason why the prices have gone up on eggs and butter, but don't tell anyone else. We sold out by the first week of December, and we begin baking mid-September every year. If anyone was unable to obtain their pepper nuts from us last year, we do apologize. But we have to choose an end date and stick to it, or we could be baking these all year round. And our pepper nut ladies definitely need a much deserved break. But thank you to Halsted for making our biggest yearly fundraiser a success year after year. You are what keeps our doors open, and we appreciate you greatly. Another thing we're really proud of is our meal program is about to cross the two-year mark, and we couldn't be more proud. We've served over 5,000 meals and counting. The word's getting around that you do not have to be a senior to come and enjoy lunch with us. Just a few days' notice is all we ask. We have several locals who are enjoying meals with us or taking them to go. And we appreciate all of the community's support. We have our first bake sale of 2025 with all the proceeds going towards our meal fund coming up this month. We are very, very low on funding. It'll be this Saturday, April 19th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Grant cycles just opened, but there's no guarantees that we'll be awarded any of them. So, if you believe in what we're doing for the seniors in our community, donations would mean so much. Due to the yearly $5,000 dispersment from the city, we are able to divert some of those funds into the meal program and other programs, and we appreciate that greatly. I'm very excited to announce that we'll be hosting the Common Ground Producers and Growers Mobile Market at the center this summer. It's a traveling farmers market that aims to help those who have food benefits throughout the state, not only seniors. This is a service for the entire Halsted community. If you receive SNAP or EBT benefits, they will match your purchasing dollars up to $25 a day. So, again, anyone who receives SNAP or EBT benefits, your dollars will be doubled. So, this is not just for the Senior Center. It's for anyone who can utilize this service. For those community members who are 60-plus and are income restricted, thanks to the Harvey County Department on Aging and the Seniors Farmers Market Nutrition Program, they will be distributing voucher books totaling $50 to be used at participating farmers markets, roadside stands, and community-supported agriculture programs. The distribution date to obtain a voucher book is Friday, June the 6th, at Newton Recreation Center from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00. We're not certain how many we'll get this year, since there have been some pretty massive cuts on a federal level. But we will have them. But they are first come, first served. If anyone you know, or if you would like to be put on a list, so I can let you know when those vouchers are in, I'd be happy to do that. They're currently working on their schedule for the mobile market, but I'll keep the public posted. I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council, from myself and from my board members. Your support means we can continue on our mission to serve not only seniors, but the Halsted community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
How many do you have? How often do you have afternoon meals? Is it every day or a couple of days, three days a week?
Monday, Wednesday, and Friday.
How many are you having show up?
We have, home deliveries are always about 12 to 14 people. So, we have a lot of homebound individuals that we, we always have them. And then, depending on what it is we're having, we might have anywhere from five to 10 more people come in. Plus, we're having people order things to go. So, it's picking up and getting really busy.
Do you send a menu? Like, if there are people that wanted to know?
The menu is on our website or on our Facebook page. We keep that always updated. And we take lovely pictures. I think you eat with your eyes first, you know? So, sometimes looking at a menu, it's like eh. But when you see the pictures and everything, it's, we've had nothing but good response from that. So, really trying to utilize social media.
And the timeframe on that?
We serve from 11:30 to 12:30 unless it's pepper nut season, and we have to share the kitchen. So, we do back it up a little bit and change the time just for a few months.
Thank you.
How many people come in to help make pepper nuts?
How many? Well, one. There's probably about a core group of five or six. The same people have the same job. The lady who runs the mixer, she's the whole reason why they taste the way they do. It's a very fine-tuned machine we have going, and we have a lot of fun, too.
Thank you for your help there. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the annual donation at Senior Center for a amount not to exceed $5,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the annual donation to the Senior Center. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, that's approved. Thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you for your support, as always.
Well, counsel, next on our agenda is one of them big projects. We're gonna talk about that wastewater treatment plant improvement and upgrades.
Good evening, Mayor. Counsel, Rosemary Saunders, Rancin Financial, and Jerry Meyer from Schwab is also here to help answer any of your questions. The city received the loan agreement dated March the 18th of this year for a total of $4 million, excuse me, I'm gonna have to look at this, $4,541,000. With that is an estimated loan forgiveness of $2 million, which would bring the project down to $2,541, if we used all the money. So, we won't know what that will be until we actually put the project to bid. But the first step tonight is for you to consider approving ordinance number 1345, which allows the mayor and the clerk to execute the ordinance and the loan agreement on the project.
Just what I like to do, sign my name at the bottom of another loan.
Ethan, do you have anything or counsel on this that we need to know about? Because I know Charlie and I read through it, and he got through all of it. I got through about 65% of it. There's a lot of meat there.
And you were still awake. It's tough.
Yeah, so.
No, I mean, I guess just for residents, this has been something that's been ongoing since 2019, when the city actually started evaluating based on what we were seeing in terms of our permit requirements under KDHE and staying in compliance with those. The existing wastewater treatment plant was built in the 70s. Was only supposed to have a lifespan of 40 years. We've obviously pushed that capacity-wise. It's still very much has the correct capacity for a community our size. But Halsted did opt to go with mechanical treatment, and so with mechanical treatment, we must stay. This will move us to a more updated method for that, Jerry. Or Pat can talk way more eloquently and officially about those processes or the difference between what we're doing. But this would transition the city to an aeromod. We're currently, we're on that oxidation ditch. Utilizes as much of our existing as we can, but we do need new components. And this would take care of us for years to come, so.
Maybe not 40, but close.
Well, at least 20.
Well, it's good to get in there on that forgiveness on partial of that loan.
Well, yeah, because we don't know if those, that forgiveness on the state idol funds is gonna be there much longer, do we?
That is, that is correct.
You think it's going away?
Yeah.
We think it might be one more year.
Federal pass-through money, and so.
Yeah, now's the time.
Well, with that, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance number 1345 and ordinance authorizing the execution of a loan agreement between the city of Halsted, Kansas and the state of Kansas to finance a wastewater treatment plant improvement project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 1345. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Okay, that carries. Then we got a B part of this, design, engineering, and construction and the administration agreement. Do you want to weigh in on that, Ethan or Mr. Schwab?
Yeah, this is an agreement. I'll let Jerry kind of explain, but, you know, Schwab's kind of gotten us across the finish line in terms of the design and all the pre-work that had been put into it. All the costs that are associated with this are included in that amount you just approved. So, this is not an additional amount of money on top of that project you're approving. Just to make that clear.
And make sure we buy American-made equipment, so we don't have to pay a tariff on it.
We have to. We're required to do that by the loan agreement, so. Yeah, as luck would have it, I have a contract here tonight that you can sign. It's for the design of all the improvements, bidding, and the construction-related services, which would get you through. It's for the design of all the improvements, bidding, and the construction-related services, which would get you through construction. Uh, with Rosemary's help, we do a one-year final after review, and you're off and running. The contract I had sent to Ethan, I actually sent him a draft in January, and we waited till we got this loan. But design is for, and this was in the, in the study, and in the loan agreement, design is for three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, and then construction-related services, inspection, occasional inspection, proven shop drawings. Uh, somebody's been in construction, you know how all this goes, uh, for another two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, so. I have those agreements here, and they're ready to be signed, whether you do it tonight, or we're ready to get going as an engineering firm, and, uh.
Once you guys break ground on this, and you have a contractor and everything, what are you looking at for turnaround time on this?
I, you know, I had said, I think I had said nine months, uh, from breaking ground and moving forward. I don't know what, uh, it's all American, I mean, the AIS and everything's gotta be done. It always comes down to what's delivery time on certain pieces of equipment. Some get stretched way out. Fortunately for you, Aeromod, which is the main supplier on this project, is in Manhattan, Kansas.
Right handy.
I'm in Manhattan, Kansas. Uh, if there's a problem, I can drive five minutes, I'm in their office, and we're working on that, so. That's it, but there's always some things that may stretch it out, but, I mean, it's not. I gotta be careful, this, it's not a huge project. It's really not. I mean, and as far as wastewater treatment plant goes, it's huge for you guys, I understand that. It's huge for citizens of Halsted. But it's not a huge project, so nine months to a year, I think, is, is certainly reasonable. Uh, and what we'll do in the bidding process is we'll recommend, you give us the number of days you're gonna be done. We'll recommend, we'd like it to be done in nine months or a year. We'll figure that out before we go out to bid. And they can tell us if they think it's gonna be more or less.
I just kind of wanted to get an idea. I'm, I'm guessing probably the longest lead time item on that whole project's gonna be the generator.
Well, I mean, the electrical, I mean, I, I didn't want to call your business out, but electrical is, is always the longest lead time.
We're, we're replacing that generator out there, right, Pat?
Yes.
'Cause I knew we'd had some issues with it, and it's pretty much wore out, like everything else out there.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, everything else, I mean, electrical items, and there can be small things, there can be electronic valves. Sometimes I've had hold-up a project for six weeks, you know? And you're like, come on, I mean, we're, we're treating water or wastewater, but we're, we need this. And, and that's, and that's a holdup, so you never know, but we'll, uh, I, I think nine months to a year, um, to answer your question, Ken, is certainly reasonable on a project this size.
I should probably know this, but I'm just gonna ask it. Um, so how does this going from what we have to what we're getting impact us, I guess, like in regards to our water treatment of what we have and what we'll be getting, and like, like how does?
Are you talking about how's it impact you and costs?
No, like, our, like our, our water, like, obviously, like, your, your citizens, like me, like, and people in the community, you know, like, we don't know what goes on out there, we just know we get water.
So, the whole point of this is you are required to meet certain levels of treatment in your water before you discharge it out of your wastewater plant.
Yeah.
You can't do that with your current plan.
Okay.
And so, you were under consent or order by KDHE, make sure you meet these requirements.
And that's part of the reason you're getting loan forgiveness.
That is exactly why you're getting loan forgiveness.
Okay.
So.
I knew we were getting close to being out of spec, I didn't realize we were.
Oh, yeah, you were, you were. And, and that's, you're not alone. That's, that, that was a common thing, and that's what loan forgiveness was all about, was let's give money to these cities that are proactive enough to say, we're gonna meet the requirements to discharge water into this stream. This is the state-of-the-art, is best wastewater treatment plant you could purchase today. And so, it will hands-down meet all the requirements that we know of.
For the next forty years.
They'll probably change it in the next five.
Yeah, I think, I think that somebody said, will it last forty years? I think the equipment will. Will it meet requirements forty years from now? A coin, I don't know, I mean.
But the discharged water's really clean. You know, the one, for example, the one in Hutchinson, it's amazing.
Yeah.
You know, because, A, they also have a lot of salt in their water, but, uh, the water that they put into the big arc is cleaner than when people get out of their wells.
Uh, without a doubt, and the, and yours will be the same way. If you wanted to, I'm not telling you this, if you wanted to, you could drink it.
Yeah. Okay, I'll take your word for it.
It would, it would not hurt.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, well, with that, Mr. Mayor, if there's no more questions or discussions, I would make a motion to approve the agreement for design and, uh, certain engineering services with Schwab Eaton, the wastewater treatment plant improvement project not to exceed six hundred and twenty-two thousand, and authorize the mayor and city staff's signatures as necessary for execution of this agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the administration agreement with Schwab Eaton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Thank you.
Very curious.
Thank you.
Brad, if you could leave your letter with Ethan, and then I'll get with him tomorrow. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a safe trip.
Next item on our agenda is the Cedar Meadows Second, uh, Letter of Credit provisions. I believe Mr. Weber's here somewhere. There he is. Come on up and tell us what you're requesting, Alan.
Uh, we are requesting to, uh, lower the letter of credit down ninety thousand from its, the spot that it's at right now. With the, uh, progress that we've had out there so far, um, and we're expecting um, at least two more spec homes, probably within the next forty-five, fifty days.
Lower it to what, I'm sorry?
Just lower it ninety thousand dollars from where it's at right now.
Right now, there's just, there's pledged just shy of two hundred and ninety thousand, so it would be taking it down to two hundred thousand, essentially pledged.
And we had a percentage or a ratio of homes we wanted, uh, see built in there before we considered this, is that right? And we're pretty close to that at this point, aren't we?
Uh, the first initial, um, drawdown was at fifty percent occupancy, so, uh, with the two going in, that would put it at about thirty percent.
Where did the fifty percent number come from when you established that?
That's just kind of standard, yeah, for most development agreements of, once half the lots are, are sold and built on, you know, the project's more likely going to be in a financially healthy place, that you're not as worried about the city having to come in and, and pay those special assessments, 'cause essentially when the city issues it, it goes under our bond authority, um, so the city, at the end, is responsible. We tend, or the whole intention is you collect those through special assessments, but because special assessments are paid via property tax, if people don't pay those, or a developer wouldn't pay them, then the city still has to pay those payments. Um, and that's why the letters of credit are, are financial guarantee, basically, to ensure that the city's not gonna get upside down, um, prior to the development, or if the development would happen to not, you know, succeed. Um, there's been Bentley, you know, comes to mind, that a lot of communities kind of got hit hard after the la- in two thousand eight, that two thousand and ten development of having extended all of that infrastructure and things, and then as the housing market went down, it got harder and harder. Um, but again, it's, it's a policy decision for you all. Um, there are some cities that, you know, have lower credits or don't require them, so.
This is the amount that covers the special taxes right now?
It covers a portion. Uh, we originally agreed to like a, a sixty-forty split, so it covers forty percent of what the preliminary engineering costs for that project were. Um, and they have to put that up before the city even, like, goes out to bid or anything, so. Um, as they say, though, it, they are seeing good, uh, good interest out there, I mean, comparatively.
Alan, of the spec homes you have built out there now, are they all spoken for at this point?
Um, all except for the one on Stutzman that was just recently finished.
Okay, that's just south of your folks. And so you're getting ready to put two more in the ground?
Two more on Main Street.
And you have some, so go ahead, sorry.
Both of those homes on the east side of Main Street, both of those have sold already? 'Cause I knew one was available.
Uh, well, actually, close on it, May second.
Okay, so it's sold.
This is my thinking on this. Um, these two developers, they live in town here, they're part of the community. If they were transient, they didn't live here in town, I wouldn't even be considering it to lower that, the ninety, because you guys are a part of this community, you're not going anywhere, I know you're not going anywhere.
We know where you live.
Uh, this is my, this is my feeling on it, so I'm com- putting it out there for the rest of you to weigh in, and, but I'm, I'm willing to do the ninety thousand, to drop it to ninety thousand, but that's where I'm at, that's how I see it.
I'd agree. I mean, putting the houses up, they're being sold. You're doing, you've done what you said you're gonna do, so, yeah, I'm okay with it.
Well, with that, I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, let's see what lands. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to, uh, drop the, at nine, the requested of ninety thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, reduce the, uh, letter of credit on the Cedar Meadows Second addition by ninety K. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. So that carries.
We'll keep moving forward. Thank you.
Alright, thanks, sir.
Keep it up. I'll get with you, Alan.
Next item on our agenda is, uh, code enforcement options. What are you thinking about there, Ethan?
Um, just to follow up on a conversation we had during our last work session. Um, we did reach back out to pro-code compliance, um, and kind of, you know, we thought the initial, um, proposal from them was probably a little, a little too, uh, too involved for Halsted as far as what we expected, kind of going back and looking at our code enforcement.
Oh, yeah, that's that third-party company we're talking about contracting with.
A third-party, um, come in and take over code enforcement operations. They've requested, just as they get out their year and as the summer, spring and summer, you know, usually busier times, when it comes to code enforcement activity, um, that, you know, for them, as a third-party, uh, making it work, um, getting it down to about thirty hours a month, um, at a cost of a thousand dollars a month. There are provisions in there, and we will gladly bring that services contract, uh, to you next meeting, but, um, just wanted, I guess, to present that update to you all and see if there was still, uh, interest in pursuing that. I can go through the reasons again, kind of the work session of why we feel there's advantages to going to a third party.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, the third-party, um, just with, one, the basic, um, right now, PD handles it. And so there's that general, um, just in terms of someone showing up at your door, you know, usually a police officer comes, even though they're there to talk about something like grass or that. Um, we have gotten feedback, you know, that some citizens that just, they get worried when they see a police officer coming. Um, second thing is obviously with our police department, um, it's a secondary duty, so their primary focus is always going to be, you know, on criminal violations, traffic safety, those things, um, but they do, as they drive around the city and, and have time, they've been doing those things, um, but there are four officers, so coordinating those, making sure there's no duplication, obviously has its administrative strains within the department itself, so this would put it with that third party. Um, and then when it comes to the appeals process, uh, one of the original reasons why we put it under the PD, um, was we kind of ran into that of, when I was serving in the code enforcement role, essentially, they would have to appeal to you all to override a decision. Um, it had been the governing body's consensus that they didn't really want council meetings to be taken up with code enforcement appeals. Um, and so, having that layer, this would still allow for that mechanism of, if we had a third party uh, doing code enforcement, they become responsible then for all the letters, documenting the case, uh, coming all presenting. Uh, they have it in their contract to actually come and talk to you all on a quarterly basis, just telling you what they're seeing in the community. But it would, uh, have them responsible for those things, move it out from the city's perspective, which can help, um, in terms of if you do have to get someone in the municipal court process for code violations, I mean, the majority of people do respond, they do correct. But that is, uh, an advantage of having that third party, too, is it definitely becomes a much more proactive, uh, right now. Just, again, all of us wear many hats, it's still more of a reactive process when complaints come in or when things are noticed. This is someone that it's their, their sole duty, um, and it's a fraction of the cost of what it would cost us to actually hire, you know, someone part-time on the city's payroll, so.
I I don't know if I'm really for an outside person or contracted person at this point, for for one, I guess, I'd like to see some data that says that our workload is truly being maxed out, um, you know. I, I think if you have police officers who are out in the community already, and they know of some things that they could be looking for, then you're kind of, yeah, you're wearing two hats, but in small towns, I think that's also kind of the expectation of your responsibilities, that you are aware of what the code is, and, um, that's part of, in, in my mind, and I'm just speaking for myself, that that's part of that expectation of your responsibilities. And if that's not, then that's not, but if it is, then it is. I mean, you know what I mean? I just think, um, unless there's truly some data to say, well, gosh, our workload is just, we're, we're maxed out, we're working overtime, we're doing all these, you know, we're writing all these citations, we're having all these domestic disputes, we're I mean, I really don't know the ins and outs of what are, is going on, so I can't speak for that. I'm just saying, it, for me to be in favor of spending twelve thousand dollars a year on something like this, I'd like to know that it's a really needed and not just an add-on fringe for me.
Do you know how many code enforcement cases we brought forward last year?
No, man, I can get that information for you?
That might be handy to know, just, you come, I'm kind of with Shawna. If you have five cases a year, do you really want to throw twelve thousand dollars at it? Probably not.
Well, concern, the thing that I, I, I get is you might have overlap, uh, one officer's making a stop, and another officer making a stop, and this poor citizen, he's thinking, man, they're really on me about this. Would there, is there some sort of software that we already have, or that we could get that we could give a work order of, of sorts to an address? And they all have access to this, this program, where they can say, okay, officer so-and-so's been here yesterday, I don't want to bother these people.
Yeah, no.
There's something like that, that we, so we don't have this overlap?
We don't have, um, typically speaking, we don't have duplicate between the officers themselves, they actually each have their own assigned quadrant.
Oh, I see, okay.
Of the community, um, that they've developed. Um, again, the, the big issue, and that's just based off of, you know, things that you guys have brought up, is the, you know, proactiveness versus, you know, reactiveness, and everyone says, you know, I mean, for, it has been asked by the governing body to be more proactive with it, and proactive means, you know, assigning someone that that's what they do and that's what their focus is. React, a reactive process is still going to lead us, and it's fine. I mean, again, most things, when we contact people, ninety-five percent of people will comply with that code letter, be it, you know, please cut your lawn, please pick up, you know, the debris in your front yard, um, things of those natures, so, um, as I said, this was just an option, it's not. Not something that.
Yeah, I think maybe we get, like, get, get the numbers out for our next meeting, find out how many we had brought to us last year, how many, uh, cases we had. And I think that'd be, help us make that decision even more, more readily. Thank you, Shawna.
Charlie, Denise, if you'd like adding anything to that?
Let's see how much we've got, how many cases we have, and go from there.
Okay, well, let's move on the agenda. The next item is a science grant opportunity. Was this the same grant we got for the way? Was this the same grant we got for the wayfinding signs?
No.
It's a different one.
Yep. So the Department of Commerce, uh, just announced their signs and there was information in the packet, it's supporting innovative growth through new signage, uh, specifically looking at, um, downtown retail and commercial business storefront signage. Individual stores are, um, or businesses can apply for this grant opportunity themselves, but cities, um, chambers, um, or economic development can also apply, talking to the Department of Commerce, um, they said, you know, if they saw like a citywide, their preference would be at least, uh, seeing three or more businesses for a community, um, as you all know, we have the dragon grant, uh, funds that we've budgeted every year, we have not seen, um, that much interest in the dragon grants, but this program fits in line with the dragon grants, so my, um, proposal to you all, I guess, is if we can, could engender enough businesses to actually support a grant application of the city using those funds that we have, uh, set aside or earmarked for dragon grants to actually, um, help meet the match, so that, um, I mean, we have downtown businesses, like the Halsted Market, that actually has no signage on the front, and it's pretty open of, it can be blade signs, you know, awning signs, uh, things of that nature. Um, but essentially be able for the city to support that grant application and our local businesses essentially by saying, you know, hey, we'll use our dragon grant funds that we still have and help make the match, um.
Is this a fifty-fifty cost share on this, or?
Um, yeah, the maximum amount is fifty, I believe it's, uh, twenty-five seventy-five. Or no.
We could more than double what we have in our dragon grant, correct?
We've got forty thousand right now.
We have forty thousand left, so, I mean, yeah, depending on how many, how much interest we had.
Well, I don't think it'd take a lot to put together a letter to send to our downtown businesses, would it?
And it's a first come, first served, so I mean, it could be, we get a grant and all the, all the money Commerce has put for this has already been spoken for, but, um, just knowing that improved signage was one of the things, um, and we have local businesses that, um, you know, make signage, um, so partnering that and keeping as much of the money in the community as possible, I think would be a win-win for downtown businesses and.
Well, you know me, I'm always about grant opportunities, that's, lets money out of our pocket, so. Do you just need the consensus tonight, or?
Yeah, cause we would have to have the actual grant application approved by you all if the city submitted it.
I'm good.
Yeah, yeah.
You good, Charlie? I think you got your consensus.
Yep.
And thank you for bringing that, too.
That finishes up the new business section of our agenda, we do have one executive session on the agenda this evening, and I would entertain that motion shortly. Ethan's gotta finish writing it out, so Charlie says it correctly. Thank you. So Jim isn't here to pass the buck, huh?
Jim's not here, so he put it on you tonight, Charlie?
Boy, I guess he did.
Executive session motion, I move that Halsted City Council recesses to executive session to discuss ongoing contract negotiations. Pursuant to consultation with attorney on matters that would be deemed confidential and the attorney-client relationship exception, Kansas Statute A seventy-five, forty-three nineteen B two. And I ask that the addition of, to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city manager, the city attorney. The open meetings and govern, governing body to reconvene the city council chambers at eight twenty P M.
Say it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to enter into executive session, all in favor, say aye.
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 Those same sign, we'll move to the back.
So close.
We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Hearing nothing from the council, we'll move on to the report section of our agenda. And I'm going to start with governing body comments first. And before I call on the council, it is my great privilege to deliver a proclamation regarding this year's three A girls basketball state champions. So I'm going to do that now. Whereas the 2025 Halsted High School Lady Dragons basketball team has through dedication and love of the sport, where every member supports one another and works together toward a common goal, have become the Kansas State three A champions. And whereas Coach Derek Schutie and assistant coaches Kyle Rieger and Keely Orr provided the 2025 Halsted High School Lady Dragons basketball team with the guidance and focus required for a winning season to be attained. And whereas the 2024 Halsted High School Lady Dragons basketball team throughout the season provided the city of Halsted and fans near and far the opportunity to support high school basketball at its finest. And whereas the 2025 Halsted High School and middle school student bodies have supported the 2025 Halsted High School Lady Dragons basketball team with their attendance at games both home and away, their display of good sportsmanship and enthusiastic cheering. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Dennis Travis, mayor of the city of Halsted, do hereby proclaim the 2024-2025 school year, the season of the dragons. And furthermore, do hereby proclaim March 15th, 2025, the day of the dragons and encourage all citizens to support the extraordinary effort and talent of the 2025 Halsted High School Lady Dragons basketball team. Signed this day, April 14th, 2025. It's pretty exciting when you get a group of young people that come together and can achieve this. And I believe that the group of basketball girls was maybe one more or one less than what was on the volleyball team? Something like that. I don't have those exact numbers, but pretty much the same group of young ladies. And I was talking about this earlier today and somebody who I was talking to had brought it up that, well, guess what? Their softball team's looking pretty good this year too. And I'm not sure how many of these girls are part of that softball team, but I'm pretty excited to find out.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting.
So with that, I'll move on to the rest of the council for governing body comments. And tonight I'll start with you Denise.
I've got nothing tonight.
Shawna?
Um, I don't really have anything. The weather's starting to get nice. So, you know, make sure you have your windows open, enjoy the cool weather and watch out for people on the roads when you're driving because everybody's out and about. So encourage everybody to enjoy the nice weather, I guess. And we have a home track meet tomorrow. I know is our first high school home track meet tomorrow. And then Thursday, our middle school is home for track. So again, if you're out walking around, it's always fun to come out and support our kids representing our community in great ways. So and I also think this weekend, there's a big forensics meet. So lots of opportunities to come support our, our community. So.
Well, Shawna's taking all of our time.
Sorry.
One fifty you, George.
The only thing I've gotten, it's really kind of become a pet peeve. And I would really like to encourage Ethan to talk to police chief to and talk to his police officers. When they see somebody mowing the yard and they're blowing it right out in the street, ride them up. Oh, that aggravates me. And that stuff, it goes right into our sewer system. Don't mow your lawn and blow it out into the street. That's all I have.
Thinking about riding a motorcycle this weekend, George.
Tell my head hurts.
Charlie? You know, I do. Just basically, I just have two requests. First one is let's take down that well house on Sixth Street sooner than later. Or let me go out there with a can of blue paint.
Yeah, yeah.
And an arrow on it that says event, athletic event fields this way. This is where you park. It's a crossing guard. It kind of gets people, people just stop in the middle of the street. Where do we park for the ball games? Go to that well house and turn left. Okay. The other one is I would sure like to have that yellow caution light back at Seventh and Chestnut. He's ignoring that one. That's it.
Well, it's great that you brought all those points up, Charlie, but you forgot to turn your mic on. We'll hope, we'll hope everybody heard that.
Everybody heard it.
Yes. Now we'll move on to Ethan for our city manager report. And you can go ahead and move into your first quarter financial after you do that, Ethan.
Spring is a very busy time for continuing education opportunities for multiple departments. Recently attended events include Deputy Clerk Connell at the City Clerk and Municipal Finance Officer Spring Conference, Court Clerk Hoover at the Association of Court Clerks Conference, Superintendent Adams, Assistant Superintendent Yance, and Maintenance Workers Peterson and Bennett at the Kansas Rural Water Association Conference. Chief Orham and Deputy Chief Hines are attending the Kansas Association of Chiefs of Police Conference this week. And then next week I will be attending the Kansas City County Managers Conference. Staff development and our continued investment in our team help us to offer the best possible services as well as stay on top of new regulations and emerging trends. And I want to thank the governing body for their continued investment within the budget for allowing staff to attend these opportunities. Spring also means that groundskeeping gets into full swing at our properties. Wedgewood has begun their regular and ongoing maintenance of the courses playing surfaces and continues to work on addressing areas that suffered winter kill. All Parks and Recreation has begun parks and pool maintenance and restrooms have been opened in the parks. Contract mowing for all city properties has also begun. Spring also sees typically an increase in our code enforcement activity. So just a reminder that city ordinances require grass and weeds to be mowed to a height under 12 inches. Grass and vegetation clipping should not be blown into city streets or gutters. Golf carts should be reregistered annually. New animal permits for fowl and dogs and cats should be renewed by May 31st to avoid additional fees. And the police department has seen an uptick in dogs at large. So please make sure that your animals are secured. And a reminder that the city no longer has a kennel. So animals at large are taken directly to carrying hands in Newton when they are collected by the police department. The city is down to less than 10 easement agreements to be able to move forward with getting the Safe Routes to School Phase One improvements project out to bid. I want to thank City Clerk Waite and Parks Director Williams for their efforts in helping to get signatures so we can move forward on this extremely beneficial project for our community. The North Street project preliminary design and engineering continues. We hope to be able to schedule informational meetings for the residents along North Street and Martin Machine to look at the preliminary design for the project in the coming weeks. City of Halsted was also informed that we received another gold star rating for our workers' comp and safety efforts within our departments. That saves us 5% on our annual premiums. The legislative session has also ended at the state. No substantial updates to the existing revenue neutral rate rules in regards to our budgeting process appear to have passed. And the bill that was being watched in regards to taxation involving battery energy storage systems that are standalone also did not make it out of the committee. It was heard in this session. There were several other pieces of legislation that did pass that impact us at the local level. And so as we get the full rundown on all those changes, we'll pass those updates to you and continue to review our existing regulations for compliance or needed updates. And switching over to the first quarter financial. City began the year with just over 6.2 million across all of our funds and ended the quarter with an increase in our cash positions, just over 6.5 million. The majority of funds currently have revenues favorable to their expenses, hence the increase in cash position. But it's still too early in our fiscal year to determine if this will be a continuing trend throughout the year. Our idle fund investments and regular accounts continue to benefit from the interest rate environment while sales tax and property tax revenues, which are our largest revenues, continue to meet expectations for this point in the fiscal year. Through the end of March, the two funds with lower cash balances are the gas fund and the general fund. The gas fund remains overall in healthy condition, but our continued purposeful spending down of that fund to make the accelerated payments on that gas utility loan means that it is unfavorable in terms of its balance to the previous fiscal year. And then the general fund is unfavorable to 2024 in part due to the loss of revenue previously coming in from the Sedgwick EMS contract. And then increases we did see in insurance costs both for property and liability as well as workers' comp. Our capital funds continue to build with the major expenditures this far in the year only being the new backhoe for public works and then the cardiac monitors for EMS. But I will note that that purchase was mostly offset by a grant from the Patterson Family Foundation that Andy had secured. Overall, we continue to be in a very strong position financially, building off of our previous fiscal year. And that is all I have unless there are any specific questions.
Any questions of Ethan's manager report, counsel? No questions?
Okay.
I guess we're done with our agenda this evening then. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, counsel.